...of the Dennison City Council will now come to order. Our invocation will be given by Jean Emerson, Pastor of New Beginnings Fellowship.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we give you praise today. We thank you, Father, for this city that we live in. We thank you, Father, for these governmental officials in our city. We thank you, Father, for the things that you're doing in our midst, and we ask your blessing upon us. Father, be here to guide and direct, and I pray your peace to be over us. And I just ask you, Father, that what we do tonight will glorify you in all things. So, Father, lead us now, and we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
This evening, we have a proclamation. October is set aside as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and this month is designed to focus on the abilities of the disabled rather than their disabilities. And we have many, many individuals who contribute daily in numerous settings, including in the workforce and in their communities. So, tonight, Marcia Lindsay, the Deputy Executive Director of the Workforce Solutions Texoma, is here to accept this proclamation. And Marcia has been very busy for several months, pulling together a lot of things that will bring this month into focus. So, be on the lookout for TV spots and news releases. There's even gonna be an informative luncheon that will help you learn about what a good thing it is to hire people with disabilities. So, Marcia, if you want to meet me at the podium? Whereas workplaces welcoming up the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month, observe each October celebrates the contribution of workers with disabilities and educates about the value of a diverse workforce inclusive of their skills and talents. And whereas reflecting the important role disability plays in workforce diversity, this year's National Disability Employment Awareness Month theme is America's Workforce Empowering All. And whereas in this spirit, the City of Dennison is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month to raise awareness about disability employment issues and to celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disability add to our workplaces and communities and affirm the City of Dennison's commitment to an inclusive community. And whereas I call upon employers, school, and other community organizations in Dennison, Texas to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, Janet Goddard, is Mayor, and on behalf of the City of Dennison, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor and Councilmember. We appreciate your support. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all the input. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Public hearings. Receiver report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 500 East Day and take action. After the conclusion of the public hearing, the council may issue an order authorized by Chapter 214 of the Texas Local Government Code, including but not limited to securing the building from entry or the repair, vacation, removal, or demolition of the structures and may access civil penalties. Ms. Floyd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Oops, I don't go too far. Sorry, did you start for me? On September 11, 2018, TLF National Taxling Trust, R&amp;M Properties, and First United Bank and Trust Company were given notice to repair or demolish the structure at 500 East Day. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833m and n of the Dennison Code of Ordinance. This property is not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition. This is the floor. There's the roof. This is the front porch. You can tell how much damage is here. Property tax value is $24,764, and the taxes are current on the property. Record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the Building Department, and staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? A motion?
Move to.
I would declare the structure at 500 East Day a nuisance and unsafe. I would order staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion from Councilmember Doty, a second by Councilmember Beck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4B, receiver report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 605 West Morton. Ms. Floyd.
On September 14, 2018, Bobby Turner Topsey, Bobby J. Turner, the estate of William Topsey Nation Star Mortgage, Thomas D. Melkroy II, and the U.S. Bank National Association as trustee for the holders of the Bank of America Funding Corporation were given notice of violations to repair or demolish the structure at 605 West Morton. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833hm and n of the Dennison Code of Ordinance. This structure's not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition. This is flooring. It's open, making it an attractive nuisance. Property tax value is $28,321. The tax amount due is $442. It was last paid in 2014. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the Building Department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council?
Mayor, move to declare the structure at 605 West Morton a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4C, receiver report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 701 West Hannah. Ms. Floyd.
All right. On September 11, 2018, Dorothy L. Allen trustee and Dorothy L. Allen Living Trust were given notice to repair or demolish the structure at 701 West Hannah. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833hm and n of the Dennison Code of Ordinance. This property is open, making it an attractive nuisance. The foundation is in poor condition, and it is not weather tight. There's been a lot of recent activity with people just staying in this one. The property tax value is $43,561. The tax amount due is $10,497. The last paid date is not available because the records, we can only go back to 2003, and they were not paid in 2003. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the Building Department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? Motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 701 West Hannah a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
I have a motion from Councilmember Spiegel, a second from Councilmember Guess. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4D, receiver report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 900 West Chestnut, accessory building only. Ms. Floyd.
John Thomas Amstad, Jeffrey Craig Amstad, and Barbara Amstad were given notice, abolish and to repair or demolish the accessory structure at 900 West Chestnut. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833hm and n of the Dennison Code of Ordinance. This building is not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition. It's open, creating an attractive nuisance. The taxes are current on this property. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the Building Department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council?
Who's the value of this?
I didn't have a value on this because this was just the accessory structure to the house.
Any other questions? A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the accessory structure at 900 West Chestnut a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with demolition process.
There's a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Betty. Item 4E, receiver report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning from local retail district to commercial district for lots 1 and 16, and the east one half of lots 2, 3, and 15, block 21, and the adjoining alley and lots 1 through 3, 14 through 16, block 18, and adjoining 16-foot alley, and a portion of the right subway of Rusk Avenue, Florence Street and Ford Street in the Fairmont Edition, 307 West Coffin Street. Mr. Dos.
Thank you. Case 2018-086Z is a rezoning request from local retail to commercial for the subject property. This is 307 West Coffin Street. There is an existing building on the property. It's not a really retail building. I believe the last use was as a health club. There's actually an indoor pool, and then some of the vacant property to the north was used as a walking track. It is on their property. It's just not built on. This is the subject property at the corner of Austin Avenue and Coffin. The area you see outlined in blue is the requested area. So, as you can see, the surrounding zoning is really kind of a mishmash of different districts. You've got local retail on both sides of it, commercial to the south of it, including the drive-in restaurant that's just to the south is zone commercial. This subject property is located away from the corner. It's not something where you typically see an active retail use. The configuration of the property and the building doesn't really match with a retail use either. So, commercial with its slightly, you know, higher intensity uses would be a good fit in this location. Staff is recommending approval of this item. The Planning and Zoning Commission at the September meeting also recommended approval of this item, and staff received no letters of opposition or support for this proposal. With that, as I said, staff is recommending approval, and we'll stand for any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
We do need to have the public hearing first.
I'm so sorry. Here I go. I turned the page, and public hearing went off of my radar. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Now, Mr. Councilmember Greenleaf. There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf and a second by Councilmember Guess. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4F, receiver report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning from single-family 7.5 district to commercial district, 3900 block West FM 120. Mr. Dos.
Thank you. The request for this property, 3900 block of the West FM 120, lots 2 and R of case 2018-094Z, is a request to rezone from single-family 7.5. That's a single-family lot with a 7,500 square foot minimum lot size to commercial zoning district. The applicant has indicated they would like to change that zoning because they have not had a lot of interest in marketing the property as residential. They've gotten more requests on the property to be used as commercial. So, staff did have some discussions about the benefits of the commercial zoning district versus if the city council would like to change that zoning from single-family to a non-residential district, that local retail, community retail would be a better fit for that location. It's away from the highway. Community retail is just a better fit for that location. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend denial of this request, and we have received, I have the numbers actually, we have received notices of opposition from the owners of 49% of the notification area. So, that exceeds the 20% rule. So, any motion, any approval action on this request would require six out of seven votes. So, this is the subject property on the aerial exhibit. You can see it's currently vacant, but on all, on the three sides, south of FM 120, there are residential properties, and on the north, the property is vacant. In terms of zoning, the surrounding zoning is SF 7.5 as the subject property is currently zoned. We also have a planned development district, I believe, for residential uses across on the north side. And then you can also see Parkdale Lane there to the northeast with the new apartment complex that is, I believe, just completed. This exhibit, it's a really fun one. This is the notification area. So, that notification area is we draw 200-foot buffer out from the property line of the subject property. We go in and we do the math on how much land area is in that notification area, and then when we receive our notices, that's what we do our math on. So, you can see those areas that are in gray, we receive no response, or they are right-of-way. The areas in red are those owners that submitted notices of opposition. And as I said, that does total up to 49% of that notification area, including the right-of-way. So, we have far exceeded that 20% of opposition. So, with that, staff does request that the council hold discussion, hold the public hearing, and make a determination on essentially what direction you want to go, whether that's denying the request, approving the request as submitted to a commercial district, or approving an alternate district, which would be that community retail that staff recommends. We did include all three of those motions in there, so you can just pick the one you want and go with that. Without any move, the applicant is present if you'd like, if you have any questions for them, and this is a public hearing.
Well, I have a question for you first.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the notification that went out to the property owners was for commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's what was requested?
Yes, ma'am.
For it, but they were not notified for, what is the ultimate zoning, community retail?
Yes, ma'am.
They were not notified of that. Did not have an opportunity to weigh in on that. Is that correct?
That is correct. The reason being is that when we send out our notice, we send out what the property owner requests. The planning commission does have the opportunity, and the council does have the opportunity to approve a stricter zoning district. So, if you want to go from commercial, commercial allows more uses than community retail. So, you can move in one direction. We notice for commercial. If the council wants to go stricter without noticing, that's allowed. However, if we wanted to go backwards, if they requested commercial and the council wanted to go to light industrial, that's something the council would not be able to do without re-noticing and going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, we can go one direction. We just can't go the other way.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Sylvester with Banks Instruction. Like I said, we've owned this property. We've had several calls for commercial. That's why we was wanting to put it in commercial. I do realize more than likely, if we do anything like that, it probably will be regional retail. Like I said, commercial, we put it, because like I said, we've had numerous calls, people wanting to buy the property, zone commercial. Nothing really residential. If it's us doing something, we're probably a year or two away, and like I said, it'd probably be a storefront, but that would, you know, fall under the regional retail. So, but, you know, that's where we're at. And if we were to sell it right now, the interest is commercial. So, but like I said, if it's regional retail, we'll have to come up with a design and present that, you know, and get that motion rolling, but that's where we're at right now.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Sylvester? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion from council?
Regional retail, what's the difference between that and community retail?
The difference between regional and community is really a matter of scale and the uses allowed. There are just some more intense retail uses allowed in regional retail. The regional retail district is really meant to be located along highways. FM 120 is obviously a highway. However, in terms of its location and traffic counts and that sort of thing, and the size of this property, community retail just is a better fit in terms of the uses that are allowed. It's more of a community-scale services and retail as opposed to a big box, you know, town center-type development.
Mr. Dos, please.
Go ahead.
I think, you know, the consideration of the person as, under the assumption that we do not move forward, go and turn the property zone. Would you not think it would be better to wait and see what this proposal, if it's organic, if we're going to change right now until we actually go and find a project? You can set options. Otherwise, if you do go back and change now, it could fit in that zone, which would be an automatic, that's the first thing.
That's correct. There are some uses that are conditional uses that would have to come back before you. However, that is true. Any use that's permitted in the commercial zoning district, if approved, would be allowed by right. There would be a site plan process and potentially a replat process. Those would go likely through Planning and Zoning Commission, but the council would not see those again.
Mr. Dos, what would, my concern is the people in that area. What if they didn't want to have community retail? I mean, we would have an opportunity to go back and poll those people, just like we did with changing to commercial?
We could certainly do that. If the council likes, we could table this item. We could table it. You could direct me to re-notice this item under community retail, and we would receive more letters. Or we could, we'd send out another notice. We could get more responses to that, and we could bring it back at a later date.
Because I just feel like those people should have the opportunity to, rather than for us to vote, and then that's the way it is. They should have an opportunity. That's just my feel.
Are we just lacking one?
There's two. So, the owner to the, well, the owner with the water tower is the city, so of course we did not respond. The owner to the south was the only owner that did not respond.
The vote percentage would stay the same. It would still be 67.
Yes, it would still be either way because there is the opposition. I can say that most of the opposition that we received was really that they would have the desire to keep it as residential and not see any sort of non-residential development there, both in the verbal comments that were at the meeting and the written comments that we received. The one written comment we received speaks about lowering housing values on this gateway to Dennison, increasing traffic on the entrance, which would be arguably could be the same whether it's commercial district or retail district. Retail might even drive more traffic, and they also have concerns with litter along that roadway. So, I find it likely that any concerns with commercial would also be the same concerns with community retail.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Any more discussion?
Mayor, I move to deny the request for changes zoning the subject property from single-family 7.5 to commercial at this time.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously to deny. Item 4G, receiver report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning from agricultural district to regional retail district for lot 1, Dennison High School addition containing 9.815 acres. Mr. Dos.
Thank you. Case 2018-096Z is a request to change the zoning on the subject property from agricultural to regional retail. I'd also like to note that the highway-oriented overlay district will also apply. That has those increased exterior construction standards, cross-access requirements, and it also requires that the site plan go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. This is a location directly in front of Dennison High School, out of the corner of 75 and 91. As you can see from the aerial exhibit, that is the subject property. There is this barrier of trees and a lot of green space between the high school and this site. I will note that the high school property does extend all the way up to that eastern property line, so the school district does own that green space in between the road and the subject property. The zoning in the surrounding property is largely agricultural and also just Highway 75 is a big chunk of that. We have a little bit of local retail to the west, commercial across the street with the service center, and the planned development district in the rear, which is the high school. The applicant did submit the attached conceptual site plan showing a couple of proposed driveway locations and some proposed retail and hotel locations on the property. It's hard to read because I had to rotate it to match up with the map, but you can see there's retail on the corner and then potential hotel sites on the south, the northeast, and the eastern edges of the property. This is informational only, and a full site plan review would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. It is worthy of noting that retail and hotel uses are all allowed in the regional retail district. We would also have to potentially replat this property in order to make something like this happen. We would also have to potentially replat this property in order to make something like this happen. So the location is on the corner of a US highway and a state highway. It really makes sense for a higher scale retail use. So as such, staff is recommending approval of this item. Planning and zoning commission also recommended approval of this item at the September eleventh meeting.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm John Munson, I live at eleven twenty-seven West Morton. And I have been inbo- involved in this property for eight, probably eight years, and the brokerage of the property and assemblage, um, all the way down to eighty-four. Frank Hawley, Medical Air Service was the buyers and, uh, master planners have been involved here. And, uh, the school site up, you know, sold during and after his purchase. And Henry Scott is aware of what we're doing. He's been, uh, submitted everything we're trying to do. And it, it's essentially a property that is, it's gonna be a good corner. No, no, uh, if it ends abouts about it, there's, uh, city controls on the frontage in terms of quality. I think that we, as I've expressed to Henry, and of course it's yet to be seen, but there's no question, there's a huge investment to the southeast here with the high school and all of its lands, and this needs to be, uh, properly planned. Uh, it would be much like a shopping center with cross access easements. There would be no public streets flowing through it. You've got, um, that's, this is probably the kickoff spot to get to Texoma. You've got the industrial area to the south. We, we would hope to see a nice hotel, for example. Uh, we're not really pushing on another big service station. But, uh, obviously, the discussion of the prospects that come along require certain things to be done. We're trying to get those things done, been working at it for several years. And would expect to have, uh, dialogue with the school system as things, as prospects may develop, and it won't be a, a quickie deal in any way it happens. Those type prospects have to go back to the corporate offices, their planning committees, review things, ask all the right questions. Somewhere down the road, you find out who it is. And, uh, then we have steps to go through with the planning and zoning and plating and so forth. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from counsel.
Well, I think you would, at least in my vision, which I don't have a whole lot of control of a lot of things in this world. But, uh, this, this property's gonna be expensive. You, you could see some things there that, for example, deed restrictions. If the property was ever sold, you'd want some, probably want to see some deed restrictions for, 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 for any buyer. But you can think of, um, a restaurant, which could be a breakfast, uh. We've got one IHOP, but it could be a similar type restaurant. I'm just suggesting that as opposed to a super filling station that is not very pretty, okay? That there's some other things, I mean, the views, uh, on this site, uh, probably would warrant some upscale development. And it's, it's, something's gonna happen there. You, you just rest assured, we're fixing to come back and zon- rezone the northwest corner the same. The southwest corner's got some problems. The, uh, boatyard is added out at the corner, there's some out parcels out along the frontage. That, that's, that bigger track is known as Prater Property, but it's kind of incumbent that something really nice happened there. That's our, our sense.
Any other questions for Mr. Munson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Discussion, motion. Okay.
Yeah, it's text dot controlled, so the access points are gonna have to meet text dot specs as far as spacing of access points. I think if, uh, depending on the, the end user that came in, we may ask for a traffic study, um, through the site plan process. So I, I think between those two things, we'll make sure that, that's gonna develop right and not, not add any more stress to that intersection there.
Any other questions? Motion. There is a motion by council member Greenleaf and a second by council member Guess. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign, the motion carries. Item four H, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning from multifamily two district and local retail district to multifamily two district, fifteen hundred block north, uh, state highway ninety-one. Mr. Dawson.
Thank you. Case two thousand eighteen oh nine seven Z is the request to change the zoning. Essentially, we're not really changing the zoning from multifamily two to multifamily two, just how the legal description worked out. We have to include that in the notice. So really what we're doing is we are changing a small portion. And you can see under the subject property there, that very small portion of local retail is really all that we'll be changing under this ordinance. So the subject property is located between those two apartment complexes on ninety-one. I believe the, the last that I heard on the proposal, what it's, this would really allow, uh, one of two things to occur, either the apartments to the south or the apartments to the north, potentially whichever one could purchase that property and then expand their apartment complex. I believe the real intent, though, is to use, uh, that portion of the property for onsite storage for residents of the apartment complex. So there would be no, um, public mini storage on this location. It would only be for the use of those residents. They would have to be incorporated into the lot, it would be an accessory use to the multifamily use, but it does need to be in that same zoning district so it can be an accessory use. So that is the request. A- as I mentioned, the, the actual change here, um, is actually a very small piece of local retail to multifamily. It's much smaller than the four and a half acres that the request is actually for. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this. Um, staff does feel that it will, either the expansion of one of those projects or the addition of an amenity to one of those projects will kind of fill in this gap that is there between these two complexes that really, uh, doesn't seem like local retail is gonna go there. It hasn't gone there yet, um, it's been vacant for a while. So, uh, the planning and zoning commission also recommended approval of this request at the September eleventh meeting.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, John Munson, eleven twenty-seven West Morton. And basically what happened here, we did the site location for the Wood Creek in, hard to believe, nineteen eighty-six. Um, they did a hundred and sixty or sixty-eight units. It went through foreclosure in ninety-one, and the Kokenhour family bought that, and it has been managed. They've done a super job of keeping it up to, up to speed. It's a conventional, there's no, um, subsidies involved in the housing there. The units to the north were done by the Rumses, uh, first the Heritage and then the Lakeview. And what happened is that we ended up with a, a vacant parcel in between four and a half acres. At one time, we had a small piece of that, that we thought would be a funeral home, and that never happened. So the, uh, Kokenhour family, uh, intends to keep their unit. They're not, um, intending to do anything else, but there are some ev- evolutions in the business where, for example, uh, some storage units, they could potentially put, um, pretty easily another sixty apartments on there. And it probably is a flex site that, depending on the winds, but they, they have a very attractive investment. It's, it's like ninety-nine percent occupied for the last five years or more. They spent a lot of money on it recently. They decided their iceboxes were getting old, so they went and bought fifty-five new iceboxes, even though the old ones still work. So they do things right and, uh, certainly believe in what they're doing. This will perhaps give them an impetus to add perhaps some new units, which we need.
Questions for Mr. Munson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from counsel. A motion. Second. There's a motion by council member Guess, a second by council member Beck. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign, the motion carries. Item four I, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, this is my last one for tonight. This is case number two thousand eighteen oh nine eight oh A. This is a set of amendments to our subdivision ordinance, um, largely aimed at streamlining our development process, our development review process, and also there are a few changes we made to bring us into compliance with state statute. So I'll just jump into those. There are four, uh, major kind of changes that, that these, that the attached ordinance would do. So the first one is lot consolidations. Um, we have a lot of, uh, lots that are jointly owned. So you have two fifty-foot lots or even two twenty-five foot lots if you're closer to downtown. Those lots are adjacent, they are owned, um, by the same person. They want to come in and build a house, one house on those two lots. And you can't put the house right in the middle because there's a lot line there, and you can't build a house on top of a lot line without building a firewall, it just opens a whole can of worms. Then you have to replat the property under our current process. That replat includes going to a planning and zoning commission meeting, which means waiting at least a month to get on the agenda. That means that staff has to do a full staff report, we have to send out public notices, um, to everyone within a two-hundred foot range. We send them the notice, they say, I want it, I don't know, they call me up and say, well, what is this? Yeah, I don't care if they want to build a house there, that's fine, I don't, none of my business. And it really just kind of is a huge hassle for something that really shouldn't take this long. Um, if you want to build a house on the property, it's zoned for residential. We have this hoop to jump through that we don't really need to jump through. So what we're proposing is that we take that, um, take that specific instance where you have one, two, three, or four multiple lots that are all, that are all owned together, that are adjacent, and instead of going through the replat process, we will approve that at a staff level through the amending plat process. Um, we've checked with legal counsel, we've run it through the state law, rigmarole, and, um, it's a very common thing to do just in order to kind of speed up that timeline. I think, you know, these kind of things we do, it's, we probably do two or three of these a month on average. So this will really speed up, um, the development process for a lot of our infill areas. That's where we have our smaller lots that are being replatted, so that's the first thing. Um, the second, uh, thing on the list is the master plat. So currently, um, any proposal for single family or any, or single family is really all you'd ever see this at. Any project that has twenty-five or more lots has to go through a master plat process. Um, and looking at the requirements for a master plat, really all it is is a phasing schedule for your overall development. And twenty-five or more lots is really not that many lots anymore. You know, if you look at the lots down at Gateway Village, there's many more than twenty-five. Um, so what we've come up with is essentially that master plat is really just a phasing, phasing map for your subdivision. You can accomplish the same things a master plat accomplishes through a preliminary plat process. So we are proposing that we just eliminate the master plat as an entire submittal process. Um, it's just one fewer step to go through, but it doesn't change the review process, it just makes it take less time. Our third area is the more universal in the plating process. Currently, all these projects have to go through a two-step process. They have to go to the planning and zoning commission for the preliminary plat approval, and they have to go through the commission for a final plat. You can't get a building permit until you get a final plat, and a lot of times, we find that applicants are running up against financing deadlines or lot delivery deadlines, and then they get to a point where they have to wait potentially upwards of thirty days to get on a planning and zoning commission agenda. And really, it's not thirty days, it's more like forty days because I've gotta do a staff report, I have to send out, no, I don't send out public notice, but I have to have those staff reports done ahead of the schedule. I have to meet my agenda posting deadlines and all those things for something that is really, if it's done the way it should be, it should be, it just is the same thing as the preliminary plat that was already approved. So what we are proposing, and this is pretty standard in a lot of cities, is that that final plat be, be able to be approved at a staff level so long as it substantially conforms to an approved preliminary plat. So let's say you have, um, I mean, any project that has both of these plaits involved. Um, instead of having to wait that additional thirty days on the backend, we can just approve that at a staff level. Now, there are some, some changes between those two, we will allow some minor revisions. If a lot line has to shift ten feet one direction, if a road has to loop a little bit further to meet an engineering guideline, then that's something that staff can approve that revision. But if there is a revision that substantively changes the neighborhood, changes the proposal, changes the aesthetic and design of the neighborhood, we would of course send that back to the planning and zoning commission for their final approval of that revision. And in some cases, we may take that all the way back to the preliminary plat and essentially say, you've changed so much that we need to start the entire process over and go through the whole thing again. So there's some safeguards in that. But this would of course save a lot of applicants a lot of time on that backend. Because at this point, when we take the final plat for approval, they've already done all of their engineering work. A lot of times, um, if, if they followed a certain process, they've actually already finished all of their installation of their streets, their water lines, their sewer lines. The final plat is really just an administrative function that we are still taking to the planning and zoning commission when we really don't need to. And again, of course, we have run this through legal counsel and this checks out as something that is allowable. And again, many cities handle the process this way, and it really takes a lot of time out of that review process. The fourth section is just our other amendments, we have a few amendments in there that clarify our processes. Um, there's some math included in the ordinance that is really hard to understand. So we've just taken that math out of Dennison words and we've just put in state law. Because we have to follow state law anyway, we might as well match our ordinance to it. That's really, there's really one big change in there, it's how we calculate our, um, protest numbers for the replats and the rezonings. So with that, this is a public hearing item, but I'm happy to have, answer any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Questions from counsel.
It really depends on the specifics of the case, if the property is zoned correctly. If, if the lot was never actually legally split, then if they wanted to build a building that was consistent with the zoning, they could get a permit that day. Or they could apply for a permit that day and we wouldn't hold. apply for a permit that day, and we wouldn't hold them up on the zoning side. It's really just a function of, does the zoning match the proposed use, proposed building? Does the building they've submitted for meet all the site plan requirements? That sort of thing. If the property was legally split into two separate tracts, we would have to have, if we could do it through the amending plat process, the planning department's review typically takes about a week to get comments back. So in combining those lots, it shouldn't take longer than two weeks with a week to, to review the plat, get comments, get any revisions, and then get everything handled on the back end, which is the getting tax certificates, getting everything signed, and taking it down to Sherman to sign, to file.
Any other questions for Mr. Doss? Motion.
I move to adopt the ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances subject to final legal review and approval.
I have a motion from Councilmember Spiegel, a second from Councilmember Gass. Oh, it was Councilmember Greenleaf. Okay, that's why I looked. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item five A. I need to recuse myself from this item, and Mayor Pro Tim Beck will facilitate it.
Just for time's sake. Let the record show that Mayor Gott has left the council chamber. Five A. Receive a report, hold a discussion, take action, rejecting a bid from Stephen Fulencheck, DBA SF Landscaping, and authorizing staff to re-advertise and reopen bidding for the twenty-nineteen mowing maintenance program. Mr. Rex.
This is a, a request for us to, or for council to reject the bids. On September tenth, we opened one bid for this, for all the mowing that's under this contract, and it was both over budget and the only bid. So we're gonna go back and look at things and see if we can re-advertise them differently, maybe break out the mowing a little differently and, and pursue this contract in a different way. So that's, that's the request at this time.
Thank you. Any discussion? Entertaining motion?
Got a motion from Councilmember Gass, a second from Councilmember Greenleaf. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same size, sign. All right. And we're gonna move to five B.
Let's do it.
Let the record show that the mayor has re-entered the chamber and is now taking back over.
Item five B. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an inter-local agreement with Dennison Independent School District for the placement of school resource officers in Scott Middle School and B. McDaniel Intermediate School. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're, you're aware of our arrangements with the Dennison ISD on the two SROs that we're gonna be placing. We did, we are splitting the cost for the two positions, eighty percent for Dennison ISD, twenty percent for City of Dennison. We budgeted for our amount in the fiscal nineteen budget. This is the formal agreement between the two that will formalize that arrangement, and it is a one-year contract that can be renewable each year, so we'll revisit that again next year. And Dennison, the school board's gonna take this up at their meeting later this month. I can answer any questions you might have.
How soon will the option be put in place?
We will begin recruiting for the positions immediately and advertise those and just depend on how quickly we can fill those. Does that sound good?
Any additional training?
Chief, you wanna take that one?
Yes, they have to have certification training, SRO certification training.
In addition to the regular, please turn.
Chief, are you open to the four stations?
Yes, sir.
So how we, do you have, do you have about the, how we can turn our hope to get selected?
There'll be a selection process, and we'll involve the DIIS to do that as well.
Any other questions? Motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the proposed inter-local agreement between the City of Dennison, Dennison ISD for the placement of two school resource officers.
Okay. There's a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item five C. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on chapter three eighty Economic Development Agreement with Intex Development LLC for the redevelopment of twelve hundred Morton Luther King Junior Street. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, we've been working with the owner of the twelve hundred MLK property to see that it can be redeveloped. It was declared a substandard structure last year, and we've been working closely really since then to see if the project is feasible, and then also to find out how the city can help be involved with, with the success of the redevelopment of the project. So the, the chapter three eighty Economic Development Agreement would bind the developer to redevelop the property into sixteen multifamily units. On the city's commitment side, we would install a six-inch water line into the project, waive building permit fees, provide for up to eight dumpsters to be used on the, on the construction of the project, and then rebate five years of property taxes following the redevelopment of the prop, of the project. Staff believes the project will contribute significantly to helping the positive momentum in the neighborhood and continue to move the, the neighborhood forward in terms of redevelopment, and we do recommend approval of the proposed agreement.
Questions for Mr. Rex?
That's correct, yes, and that's in the agreement as well.
I don't believe so, no. Yeah. Just following up on your question, Councilman Doty, the developer did submit today for a building permit too, so he's already moving forward with that. Not wasting any time.
Good. Any other questions for Mr. Rex? A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the proposed chapter three eighty agreement with Intex Development LLC.
There's a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Councilmember Beck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. There is no need to go into executive session this evening, so there being no further visits before this council. The time is six fifty-nine, and we are adjourned.